Let me call this meeting of the Longdale City Council's order. I'm going to ask the city clerk to please give us the roll call.
All right, good evening. Mayor Proton Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Borman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Mayor Pullman Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Madam City Clerk, is Pastor Danny Wenders in the audience? There you are. Okay, so we're going to have our ceremonial portion. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Cuevas to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, and Reverend Danny Wenders will lead us in a word of inspiration from the Life Restoration Church.
Please stand, face the flag, hand over your heart. Ready? Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Can I take this off? City Council and guests, thank you so much for inviting me. My name is Danny Wenders, and I'm part of the executive leadership team at Restoration Life Church. I just have a quick passage that I want to share with you, and then I'll pray as soon as I get my phone to behave. So this is out of James 1:25. For anyone who is a hearer of the word and not a doer, he is like a man who looks intentionally at his natural face in the mirror, for he looks at himself and goes away and once forgets what he was like. But the one who looks into the perfect law, the law of liberty, and perseveres, being no hearer, but being a hearer but who forgets, but a doer who acts, he will be blessed by his doing. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this opportunity here to come before the board, and we just ask that you would join us. Those that are here bringing issues before the council and for the council members, I ask that you give them ears to hear and a soft heart to be receptive to the discussion. Father, I just pray for the council members that you would guide them, that you would lead them, that you would give them wisdom and discernment in the decisions that are before them. Father, I pray for their houses, for their finances, just blessings upon them as they take on this leadership role. Father, I just ask that you continue to encourage them and guide them, direct them, and lead them towards your will as they exercise their duties at the city. Father, we just thank you for all that you do and all that you provide, and I just pray this in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend for those words of inspiration. So we have a presentation tonight from Dr. Stefan Nielsman from the Sentinel Valley Union High School District. The superintendent, new superintendent, welcome sir.
All right. So thank you, Mayor Pullman Miles, and members of the city council. I'd like to start by thanking all of you for the longstanding partnership that you have with our district and we have with you. I've already met with the city manager, and we've set up some appointments to meet with each other on a regular basis to make sure that we can continue to do good work for our community. So just an update on our district for this year. We have had a slight decrease in enrollment, but we're still at around 6,000 students strong. We're back for in-person instruction for the 21-22 school year. We know that many of our students during the past year have had some difficulties, and we've added additional counselors, social workers, and other support staff to try and assist them with that. Like all the other districts in California, we are also offering independent study for any students that don't feel comfortable coming back onto campus, so we have a full program for that. We're also offering a full athletics program, our student clubs, and other activities such as dances and performances. So these extra programs and these extra supports all require additional personnel. All of the school districts, pretty much in the country right now, are suffering shortages of teachers and other support staff. We have a lot of positions that we're flying right now. So if you know anybody that's looking for work, whether it be teaching work or support staff work, custodians, anything like that, I encourage you to have them give us a call at the district. We can use all the help we can get. Again, always hiring right now this year. Need lots of extra support staff for all of our students. And that's not just us, that's all the other districts in our area too. You may have noticed some construction projects that we have going on at our schools. So in October, we'll have a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Hawthorne High School for Nyman Theater. That's going to be the rebuilt Nyman Theater. The old one got flooded and it was condemned. We had to tear it down and build a new one, so that'll be at our October board meeting. Just before the board meeting, that'll be dedicated. We'll have a ribbon-cutting for that. You may have also noticed at Losinger High School, the administrative building over the past year or two has been overhauled. Everything's been torn out of that, asbestos abatement. It's totally been rehabbed, new windows, new everything in the building. I really encourage you, if you're a alum of Losinger, to go check it out. It's a beautiful building. They still have a little bit of work that they're doing on the exterior for the landscaping, but it's really fantastic inside. Everything is modern now, heating, air conditioning, all the stuff that a brand-new school would have. It's a really beautiful building. You know, when I started teaching in the district about 20 years ago, our buildings were all crumbling, you know, ceilings falling in, we didn't have supplies, half the stuff didn't work. Over the past 10 years or so, we've really seen all of our schools in the area, you know, all of our high schools get new buildings, and just the facilities are all modernized and state-of-the-art. It's really fantastic to see that, and we're glad for the community's support on that. For anyone interested, and I'm going to try and read this directly because it's kind of detailed for what's going on with times and dates. Our homecoming season is upon us. Longdale High School's homecoming will be at Longdale High School on October 8th at 7:00 p.m. So anyone interested in going to Longdale's homecoming will be October 8th at 7:00 p.m., where they'll be playing the Torrance High School Tartars. Losinger High School's homecoming will be on October 22nd at 7:00 p.m., where the Olympians will play the Inglewood High School Sentinels. Now, because the next stage of construction for us is all of our athletics fields, Losinger's fields have already closed. So that homecoming game is actually going to be played at North Torrance High School. I'd also like to invite everyone to attend the Mayor's Cup, which is coming up, where that'll be held at Hawthorne High School, Losinger facing off against Hawthorne High School, and that will be on October 28th at 7:00 p.m. at Hawthorne High School. So again, thank you for allowing me to have this quick update on the state of Sentinel Valley. We're excited to be back and preparing students to graduate ready for a college career and life. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Superintendent, I want to say real quickly that we welcome you as the new superintendent. We definitely look forward to working with you. We had a very good and close relationship, Dr. Gregory O'Brien, and you got absolutely outstanding staff there. We just appreciate all the things you guys are doing on behalf of our students. We appreciate the partnership, and we look forward to building a closer relationship with your office as well. We are your partners, so feel free to call on us at any time. We really want to thank you. We look forward to losing, the completion of the losing. Matter of fact, we've already gotten some good comments about what's going on so far compared to Hawthorne and Longdale High School, so we look forward to that school being completed as well. It's looking real good, it's looking real good, it's looking real good. I just want to thank you and thank the residents for supporting those volunteer measures that made it all possible as well. Anybody? We got a couple.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Being a graduate from Sentinel Valley, I just wanted to extend the welcome. We know you've been there a while. I also wanted to pass along the message. My mom was very pleased when she heard the news, former school board member, so I just want to say congratulations, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to second that. And yes, I am a Longdale High School alumni, so go Cardinals. So congratulations, and I look forward to working with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, thank you for being here.
Thank you all.
Okay, next up on our agenda is our Public Safety Report. Let's hear from Captain Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the Public Safety Report for September 20th through October 4th. As we enter the fourth quarter of the year, I'm happy to say that crime remains relatively low, especially when compared to last year. Robberies are down 30 percent, assaults continue to decline and are down 23 percent, burglaries are down 2 percent, and grand theft autos remain the same as last month at negative 10 percent. The uptick in large-sneak thefts I spoke about last month has subsided, but we continue to need our citizens to be diligent in regards to locking their vehicles and not leaving valuables in plain sight. Speaking of thefts, on September 21st at about 12:00 p.m., Deputy Poole left the parking lot of the Longdale Service Center and conducted a license plate check of a Chevy Suburban. However, the return came back to a Cadillac. Believing the vehicle may be stolen, Deputy Poole conducted a traffic stop on the vehicle and detained the driver for a stolen-vehicle investigation. During her investigation, a search of the vehicle, she recovered narcotics, several shaved vehicle keys used to open and start vehicles, construction tools commonly used to steal catalytic converters, and discovered the ignition was damaged. At the time, the vehicle was not reported stolen, nor was the owner able to be contacted. The driver was arrested for reasonable cause grand theft of vehicle, possession of burglary tools, possession of controlled substance, and booked at South Los Angeles Sheriff's Station. Later, after the fingerprinting process, it was revealed the suspect's true identity had several warrants for his arrest. Since he had initially given Deputy Poole someone else's name, he was additionally charged with false impersonation of another. We believe the suspect is responsible for numerous large-sneak thefts and burglaries that have occurred in the city. Deputy Poole wasn't finished with her day. Later, at about 4:00 p.m., Deputy Poole was in the parking lot of the Longdale Service Center when a female claimed she was being stalked by her estranged husband. When Deputy Poole contacted the husband, he claimed the gun had been pointed at him by the male who was driving his wife's car. Deputy detained the driver in the parking lot and recovered a loaded firearm from within the vehicle. The driver was arrested for assault with deadly weapon and booked at South Los Angeles Station. As a reminder, if you're having marital or relationship problems, it's best to seek counseling or other type of assistance before things escalate. You can always call the Los Angeles County Domestic Hotline at 1-800-978-3600. Once again, that's 1-800-978-3600. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Are there any questions of the captain's report? CNN, thank you for your report, thank you for the fine work you and your deputies have provided for us.
I thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is our communications. Our communications is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body or item that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to this body or items that are not on the agenda, I asked you to line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you approach the podium, if you would start with your name first, we would appreciate that. In about two minutes, the ember of the light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. I'm going to add this week, because we have a lot on our agenda, if you would, a group that's speaking on the same issue, if you would simply, after the first speaker, if you agree with that speaker, if you would just simply give your name and say that you have agreed or you concur with the previous speaker, I would appreciate that. That would help us move things along. Let's have our first speaker. Who is willing to speak to this body? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Hernandez. Good evening, Mayor Pullman Miles, and members of the city council. My name is Jessica Hernandez, I am a resident of Longdale. As previously expressed, I am affected by tobacco smoke coming from my neighbors in the building I live. When they smoke, the smoke travels inside my home. I have closed the windows and doors, but the smoke finds its way to enter my home. I worry for my baby's health, and I know that it can affect her health. As mentioned before, tobacco smoke can affect many parts of the body, even if the person does not smoke. Even a short exposure can be toxic to our health. There is no doubt that tobacco and smoke can affect anyone without discrimination. I believe that every person has the right to enjoy their home without worrying about breathing other people's smoke. I urge you to look at this issue and meet with us to talk more about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's have our next speaker. If there are any other speakers, if you come all the way down, come all the way down. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening. Mayor Pullman Miles, councilmembers, city staff. My name again is Griselda Sanchez, and I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator for Fame Assistance Corporation. At the last council meeting, we presented you again with important information on how tobacco smoke affects many Longdale residents living in multi-unit housing. Today, we want to answer you some of those concerns and provide you with the resources to answer your questions. One of the questions that councilmembers expressed was seeing or gathering the opinion of community members on this issue. We have presented that information to you, and it's again shared with you in the information packets in front of you. They're blue folders, and you will see that there are a fact sheet along with some of the results, and also some questions that were, the questions specifically that were asked to Longdale residents. Since March 2019 to March 2020, a survey was conducted here in Longdale where residents were asked several questions about their experience with tobacco secondhand smoke exposure. The results reflected 45% of Longdale residents reported secondhand smoke drifted into their unit in the last year, and 95% would prefer to live in a completely non-smoking building if given the opportunity. More information on the survey can be found in the survey results. We have also included a sample of the survey questions in case you would like us to provide you with a customized report. Let me also share what other communities are also doing to protect families from tobacco smoke exposure in their apartment unit. In 2011, the city of Huntington Park addressed and prioritized this issue of tobacco smoke in multi-unit housing. The city adopted a resolution and accepted help from outside nonprofit agencies to work collaboratively to create a model ordinance, assistance and sample policy that we can also provide to you if needed. From the research, the city determined that the best method was to create a smoke-free policy ordinance, one that protects residents in a building or complex, and include new units and existing units. We also have attached a copy of this report and study also found in that folder. Other similar communities have also prioritized the health of their residents and looked into the same solution. These include Boe Gardens, city of Huntington Park, city of El Monte, Compton, Baldwin Park, and also other neighboring cities like Carson, Manhattan Beach. Other cities include Culver City, Pasadena, Santa Monica, Burbank, just to name a few.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Pullman Miles, councilmembers, members of the community, and everybody here in this chamber. Once again, my name is Ricardo Torres. I've been speaking to this body for a couple of occasions, and I'm the Program Director of Fame Assistance Corporation. To continue providing information on the questions and concern expressed at the last council meeting, I want to also speak on the benefits of multi-unit housing and smoke-free policy to be more. As we know, tobacco can have consequences on the people who smoke as well as the people who are exposed to it. Smoking and exposure to tobacco smoking costs $1 to $2 million of a lifetime per person. According to the National Institute of Health, nationally, it costs $170 billion in healthcare costs and $56 billion in loss of productivity. But it can also have consequences of the belonging and the properties where tobacco is used. Smoking can increase the cost of renovations for people who own properties. Smoking damages walls, flooring, carpets, and appliances. It also increases the risk of fires and increases the liabilities of an apartment complexes for the owners. That is why many insurance companies have incentivized property owners to become smoke-free by providing them discounts for those who adopt smoke-free policies in their properties. The cost of renovations are very expensive, as they are, and even more with the market changes today. But if you add to the equation taking down walls, the ceiling, flooring, insulation, in order to rehabilitate the unit for the next tenant, it's going to be pretty expensive. The cost can increase drastically and very fast. I have added to your packet in front of you a sample of the cost report for property owners to restore apartment units. This shows the smoke-free policies can be very economically beneficial to business owners as well. We also want to address the concern on how these policies can infringe people's liberties, since that was one of the concerns last time. And we have included a report from the Public Health Law Center that addresses the so-called constitutional right to smoke. In this report, you will find how courts have found none of the named constitutional rights and how it applies directly to smoking, and how the Constitution also does not explicitly mention smoking. And the people who claim the right to smoke usually rely on a few litigated arguments. I recommend you to take a look into this document. It has a lot of good information. Community members from all occupations support the policy, support the work that we're doing, and that's why a lot of community members are also involved and have been coming, speaking to you, and are asking you to meet with us. And there again, we ask.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, good evening, everyone. So my name is Noah C. Two. I'm an intern at Fame Assistance Corporations. So today, the topic will be about tobacco smoke. So it has been proven that tobacco smoke is very dangerous for those who don't smoke. I also know that, I also think that in the last year more than ever, we have experienced having healthy homes is very essential. Sadly, for those who are daily exposed to unwanted tobacco smoke is not the case. Scientific studies have shown that tobacco smoke can drift into and out of open windows and doors. It can even travel through shared vents and ducts, cracks in the walls, gaps around the electrical wiring, lights, and plumbing, and through floorboards. Our houses are not built to be airtight. So that is why institutions like the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the CDC have issued statements that all multi-housing units should be smoke-free. Since 2014, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have placed non-smoking policies in most of their affordable housing buildings. That is to protect residents from tobacco exposure, but also protect themselves from any liability. So, and many existing big housing organizations are transitioning to smoke-free too. Volunteer policies are good when they're accepted, but the problem is that when those properties change owners, their policies also change and are limited to reduced time investments. That is why municipalities in California have begun to adopt laws to protect residents from tobacco smoke where they live. So several years ago, the California Air Resource Board, the state agency that regulates outdoor air, said that tobacco smoke is a toxic air contaminant with no safe level exposure, and it can cause illness and death. That same statement and conclusion is also said by the U.S. Surgeon General too. Many Longdale residents are exposed to secondhand smoke in their multi-unit dwellings. Cigarette and tobacco smoke can travel from one neighbor's home to another, the same that noises and cooking odors can travel to. We ask you for the opportunity to meet and discuss what Longdale can do to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randall, here from Longdale, resident. I appreciate the tobacco smoke issues that these speakers have brought up for the past month or so, really. And I think what would be helpful, and I think we heard some of what other cities are doing, but I think rather than focusing on the dangers, which we all know, what do they propose the city can do about it? For example, I'm fortunate, I've lived in a condominium project in Inglewood for 24 years. We've had no smokers on the complex, we've been fortunate. But there's several things that can be done. I mean, the owners of the properties have the right to regulate who smokes in their buildings. I mean, that's one avenue that should be looked at also. Now, what other cities do? Manhattan Beach has banned non-smoke in public places. And I think they've extended that also to no smoking in the work sites. Hermosa Beach has similar ones. I don't think it extends to smoking in the work sites, but again, in public places. Santa Monica has an unusual one, is that they have an ordinance in the code that says property owners of apartment buildings or condominiums need to designate whether they're smoking or non-smoking, and they have to notify the residents that come in there that you can't smoke, you can't smoke in the complex. Now, Glendale is one of the more restrictive ones, because since 2013, any new units, condos, or apartment buildings, they have to all be non-smoking. And I think those that were built for that have the same thing like Santa Monica, you designated as smoking or non-smoking. Now, as far as I could tell, these initiatives were passed by the city council. They weren't placed on the ballots. But I think it would be helpful, rather than hearing about the dangers of the secondhand smoke, which we all know, what's the best way forward? I mean, it'd be much easier to get something passed. If something concrete was presented to the council, they could look at it and work from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak to this body? Okay, CNN will close, put a comment, and bring up to the diehuses for your comments from the council. Let's go to Councilmember Suarez.
Just wanted to say thank you to everybody that came up. A lot of good points were made, and I will take a look at this packet. I have met with the group before and got a little bit of a background, so I would encourage the rest of the council, if you can, make some time just to hear them out. But with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. I do have a meeting scheduled with Fame so that they could do a little presentation for me.
Councilman Hoffman Borman.
Thank you again for everybody that spoke. And Randall, you just brought up some really good ideas about property owners. I really would like to hear more about what Santa Monica is doing over there, about holding the property owners responsible for making that decision. Thank you.
Mr. Proton Kearney.
Commissioner Cuevas, when you have your meeting, did you ask them about smoking marijuana in the apartment buildings? And they're talking about tobacco. I know the state of California, it's illegal. The federal government doesn't recognize it. Also, if you have a house, if you have an apartment building, house and house, these two houses smoke. The smoke is still going to get into the apartment building. So, you know, you've got to be careful of smokers' rights too. So maybe if you can ask those questions during your meeting.
Thank you. And I actually want to thank everyone who came out and spoke and shared your views on whether it's smoke-free for apartments and multi-unit apartments or whatever. We'll take a look at it. Thank you. Let's continue our agenda. Next item is the consent calendar. Item U, what is the pleasure this body concerning such?
If there's no addition, subtraction, I'll make a motion to accept the consent. It has written.
I'll motion that, I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is being made by current, and we approve the consent calendar and set it by Cuevas. Is there any discussion on the motion? CNN, would the council please vote on the consent calendar?
For the consent calendar, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The next item on the agenda is purchasing policy discussion. Let's have the staff report.
I'll speak on this one, because I don't think there is a staff report. I requested to bring this forward. So I'm going to talk about, so I had a question. This kind of came up of me asking questions. I had a request from a vendor to be put on an RFP list or a bid list. And so then I went to staff, and I said, oh, can they be put? And to come to find out that, I guess, there wasn't a list being maintained that we kind of all thought there was, I mean, after discussions with different people. So then it got me thinking, well, then how does the process really go? When someone comes, we want to make sure that our process is transparent. And so it seems to be where, I guess, at staff's discretion, they will select which vendors to send out a proposal, and then if they respond, look at those proposals. It kind of concerned me, because I think that our process needs to be very transparent. The other thing that brought up is we're making, you know, decisions internally, and it doesn't come to council unless it's 50,000 or more. it doesn't come to council unless it's 50,000 or more. Now, for me, 50,000 is kind of a lot of money. You look at the median income level for the, the average resident, 60, 60,000, I think I looked at it. And so I'm looking at this and thinking, we need to have several layers of oversight. I think that we need to, for the residents, be transparent and accountable. You know, I understand that it may come up where adding more layers might delay things a bit, but for me personally, we're elected by the residents, and so I think that we need to have some more oversight and we need to be the ones that see things, you know, nothing too egregious. I think when I looked at the policy, the history of it, first it was 2,000, then I believe it, it went from 10 to 50,000, which to me is kind of a big jump. So I brought it forward, wanted to, to bring it up to the council's attention. You know, I think that, I think it's something we need to seriously look at, and I think that we need to be accountable to the residents and, you know, look at these amounts and see how can we make sure that we're portraying a city that does overlook their books and that we're, we're being transparent about our process. So that's why I brought it forward.
Let me make sure I'm clear. This is regarding the, the city manager's ability to enter into-
Well, there's, there's two, yeah. So there's, I believe it's a $5,000 for department heads, and then it goes from 5,000. And then in between that, it doesn't come to us until it's 50,000 for a contract. So to me, that, I mean, looking at what, you know, the average, I think we, we might want to lower the threshold for that. I think it's a little high. And I, I think just for transparency purposes, you know, and good faith to the public, we're looking over their funds, I think it's something that we seriously need to take a look at.
Okay. Okay, Quivers?
No, I, I do agree with Bernadette. There's a big jump between the 5,000 and 50,000, and we should look and bringing it down and make any large decisions.
Good point, Council.
I would just like to add, is there a way that, I know we don't have a finance director at the moment, can we have someone in staff maybe do a comparable to cities our size and come back and tell us what that amount is, what we're finding is out there at other cities that are comparable to the size of Longdale, population-wise and income-wise?
Yes, just to respond to that, Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman, in discussions on this matter, that did come up, and it's something that staff is glad to do. We're, we're glad to take a look at what cities in the South Bay are doing in terms of, you know, that type of staff approval for, for purchases, as well as what other contract cities do for, for that. So we'll be glad to take a look at that and bring information back to the council.
Well, I did some research, and I know some of the South Bay cities around us are size, which is Lamita probably one of them. There, I believe the purchasing is $25,000. I know one a little further north that they're purchasing, authority is $15,000, so let me do as close as one. You can't compare us with Torrance, Manhattan Beach, El Segundo. You gotta compare us with cities that are our size, like Lamita, some other contract cities. But I agree with you, the amount is way too high. I know why we did it, but I think it should come down now. Turn over your-
Yeah, I've got no problem taking a look at it also. I, I would add that we should also have a provision, authorizing the city manager to make expenditures beyond whatever we decide on with another cap, if it's an emergency, so that we're not waiting for two weeks or whatever it happens to be. In some cases, it might be three weeks if we aspire on weeks in a month to, to make the purchase. And of course, that won't happen too often, but that just give the authority to do so in the cases of emergency. Whatever the threshold is that we set, I do agree that, for some reason, I, I was thinking in, in my mind that it was 10,000. Maybe that was when I first got elected or something, but-
It was.
-it stuck in my mind, stuck in my mind. So it seemed like according to your research, at one time it was 10,000 or so.
At one time, it was 10,000, then it jumped to 50. I did already do comparisons for the other surrounding cities, and ours seems to be on the very high end, especially for our size. Most of them are under 25,000, or majority of them.
Well, you know, I was, I was just going to suggest that, although I love the idea of doing the comparison or what have you, but I don't know if we necessarily need to do the comparison, because I, I think it might be the will of this council to come up with a number that's reasonable, that, that similar cities, and I say similar cities, not necessarily in size, but in the, the same needs as, as our city, because they could be slightly bigger or what have you, but have the same needs or what have you, or small and have greater needs. But I think we can come up with a number. I mean, I, I'm happy to, you know, if that's, if that's the will of the council to, to get the comparison, but I don't know if that's gonna, it'd be good information.
I just, I, I, before we changed anything, I would just like to know what other cities around us would be doing.
I have them right here.
You want to share some of those with us?
Yeah, so Lamita's 25, Manhattan Beach is 25, Redondo Beach, 35, but they're a lot bigger. Carson's 25, and Hawthorne's 25. Other than that, the other cities are, are way bigger. I don't even, I mean, Inglewood's, you know, way bigger. They're at 50, but their size is not comparable to ours, so.
Well, when you say Carson is 25, send out three. Carson's 20, 25, and Hawthorne is 25, both of which are larger cities, especially Carson. So I don't see us having to leave too much beyond that, if not lower than 25, what you said.
And, and the, another point I wanted to bring up is, right now, we don't have a finance director. And so that's a little bit scary right now in terms of, you know, I, I know, I don't know how long it's going to be before that happens, but I think that, you know, there needs to be a little bit of oversight, you know, we're not sure. And then two, we're not sure what's going to happen in the future. You know, we're still getting through the pandemic and the aftermath of it, and so I think it's just, we just need to make sure that we're watching city dollars.
Councilmember, you want to add something?
I was just going to say, I think that we could make kind of a, a layer approach. I agree that we need to be conservative. I don't necessarily know, how many times, Kevin, has it been used in the last, say, three to five years that we've had to do an expenditure? That would be question number one. And number two, I did like your statement that maybe possibly do a layer effect, that, like you say, it could be three weeks before we're meeting again, if something is happening, that that authorization is around without us having to get back together. I think it's worth the conversation. I don't necessarily know if tonight, we could come up with an idea of what that would look like.
There was a question, you posed, I wanted the opportunity to, to address your question. Did you understand the council?
Yes, I think so, Mr. Mayor. How many times has that authority been used? I, I couldn't answer that for sure, to be honest with you, but I, I do know that it's been at least maybe two or three times that I can recall, and, and recently, when that's been used. And I think, I'm just trying to think back over the last couple of months, there may have been expenditures in the amount of 20,000, $25,000 perhaps. But keep in mind, those items were all budgeted, so these were not new and unexpected expenditures. So, but that's, that's what I recall.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Is there a way we could get a report of the past year, any expenditures over $15,000, to see how many, where we could, if we need to keep it at 50, or if we need to lower it maybe to 25, $15,000? And also, I would like to see us start a vendor list, since-
I think each department needs to, to have one. That way, if someone comes to me and approaches me about it, I can direct them, you know, here. There does, however, need to be kind of, I guess, expiration dates for them. You know, I don't want a list of, of people who are non-responsive clogging up the list, so, you know, maybe we can come up with something like that.
I agree with that. See, I, I have no problem with us getting a list of, of, like an itemized list of how many times we had expenditures over, get 10,000. I have no problem with that. For me, it's, once again, it's good information, but I'm still of the opinion that it should be lower than, than 50,000, and I'm thinking more like 25,000, because you got cities like Carson and Hawthorne, which have a bigger budget and, and more needs than the city of Longdale. I mean, I couldn't see why minus some type of emergency that we would have authorization created like 25.
And, and we've done it on 10,000 or in the past, you know, so, you know, I'm thinking it's, there's still a good enough amount to be approved, and I don't think we ever had to do last-minute approvals, you know, prior to the 50,000, or, you know, looking back at the history of it. I don't know, maybe our other councilmembers can remember.
We had a couple, we had City Hoff left, we had, which is, I, I do with you, Robert, I think it should be low to $25,000. I don't know if this is the right meeting to do it, if we have to vote on tonight, or do we bring it back?
Yeah, we can, if, if this, if you have the consensus willing, definitely bring it, bring it back to the next council meeting, now, it seems like an urgency. And at the same time, we can bring back, just so we can look at the, the automatic expenditures, how many times we've had expenditures over 15,000, we can certainly, certainly do that. Because every once in a while, we do have those emergencies, but-
Yeah.
-once again, even if, even if we did have an emergency and it's exceeded the amount that we are going to allow the city manager to expend in the case of emergency, we can always have an emergency meeting.
Yeah.
It's such an emergency. So why don't we do this, if I think we have the consensus that we're bringing back to the, the next council meeting? With that direction? All right, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, let's move in our agenda alone. Next item, item six, Parks and Recreation Banner Program. Yes, sir, let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council, residents and community members. Mike Estes, Director of Community Services, to present the Parks, Recreation and Social Services Street Pole Banner Project. The Parks, Recreation and Social Services Commission, which from here on out, we'll just refer to PRSSC, started a fundraising effort in 2005, which entailed a fireworks stand fundraising program. We've done that virtually every, every year since. There's been a number of years we haven't for different reasons, you know, some attrition from the commission, difficulty finding a property, whatnot. But we've done that pretty much, I think it's been about 11 of the 16 years, so that's what's supporting this type of program. The revenues collected from the fundraising program are deposited into a PRSSC trust fund account, and those are used for qualified purchases per the municipal code, which are social leaver, leisure services. And mainly, it was started in 2005 to aid the Parks and Recreation Department when state revenues were really tough way back in 2003, '04 and '05. And so that was the purpose of it, and also to fund items that are not included in the city budget. Past support for the city's Holiday Decorations Program, 2014 through 2020, has, has happened through Parks and Recreation, doing little, little, little tiny projects to kind of help the, the city's decorations program. Things like vinyl street pole banners they've done, replacement flags for major holidays. This past year, just another example, they, they purchased equipment and supplies so we could somewhat jury-rig our monument signs in the city for locations to get them looking good. And we're taking a next step forward this year to install permanent infrastructure. But going back to the banner project, in March, the PRSSC wanted to do a little bit more this year in the, in the area of holiday decorations, and they suggested a year-round street pole banner program. Now, in years past, we've done vinyl banners, which, you know, they catch wind, they fade, they're just not very good products. So what, what we're talking about right here is top-of-the-line marine acrylic banners, which they're more durable, they're brighter colors, they last longer, they don't rip in the wind, things like that. So just for sake of discussion, those are the types of banners that we sought after and the ones that we're moving forward with, once again, marine acrylic material. So the Parks and Recreation, they wanted to do a year-round banner program with four different seasons, and the banner program will be consisted of 60 street pole banners with 30 each on each side of the boulevard, and we're going to decorate the inside, the outside of the medians, which is the inside of the boulevards on Hawthorne Boulevard on the curb side. So we'll have approximately 30 on each side stemming from Rosecrans down to Redondo Beach Boulevard within the city limits. So 30 on each side, that's what the program will be consisted of. And they have generally four seasons, just in generally speaking. One season's going to be winter holiday, the next season will be spring, another season will be summer, patriotic, and then finishing up with the fall. So each banner, each season of banners will be consisted of two banners, two different banner designs. So that's where we get our 60 from, 30 on each, once again, on each side of the boulevard. And there'll be two banner designs. One will be Longdale-specific, second one will be part of the South Bay-specific. So as you go up and down the boulevards, moving with the direction of traffic, they'll rotate. So Longdale, part of the South Bay, Longdale, part of the South Bay, and so on, until we cover both sides of the boulevard. And this will include all the high-level banner hardware as well. So that's included in the project that we're doing now. So back in July, the PRSSC allocated $45,000, a not-to-exceed amount of $45,000, to complete this project. And based on the quotes that we got and the, the low bidder that we selected, street decor in Reno, Nevada, it looks like we're going to be able to do this project for way less than $45,000, and probably right around the, the proposal amount that street, street decor submitted to us. The winter holiday design has already been completed by PRSSC, so in order to make sure that there's no breaks in the posting and the installation, and we have a year-round banner program, the reason why we're doing it this way, so we can get one up, we can work on another one, we'll have that done before it's time to go up, and we'll do that until we finish all four seasons. So once again, we'll have no breaks in the banner design program, and we should have banners up the entire, entire year. For the next three to five years, we hope, these banners are very durable. It's not a one-year project. These banners are, we're expecting them to last at least three years. You know, with three months at a time, it, it should easily work. So once again, a year-round project and a year-round banner display project that we're hoping will last three or five years. We know it'll last three, we're hoping it'll go four or five. So once again, the winter holiday design has been completed, and now Parks and Rec is working on the spring design, and we plan on having the spring designs finished probably November or so, which we can go to print, go to production and have those in time to post those. And so this is just, you know, Parks and Rec, the PRSSC has been doing a lot in the area of holiday decorations over the, the final year, the past six to seven years, but they really wanted to do something special, really wanted to do something to decorate the boulevard and, and raise the bar for the city, and, and I think the community is going to like it as well. It's really going to make the boulevard look nice. If you look in your packet, your first attachment, you will see the designs that have been completed for the winter holiday designs, which we plan on those going up probably, you know, they're due to come in any day now, probably within a week. And speaking with the Director of Public Works, Julian Lee, he wants to start installing those in late October. It's going to take approximately probably five to seven working days to get these all up in the banner hardware, so we'll have all these up probably in the first week in November, and they should remain up until probably late January, until the time we're ready to replace spring. Spring will probably stay up until about May or so, and we'll put up the patriotic summer banners. Those will go through the summer, probably until September or so, which will finish up with the fall. So you have the designs in your packet, and I'm sure you've seen those already. Staff is available for questions. However, staff does recommend that the City Council receive and file this report, and staff is available to answer any questions that the City Council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estes, for that staff report of this program. I want to say right off, we take any comments, that I love it. With that, let's see if anyone has anything to add. I do have two questions, but let's see, Councilmember LaSorres, she want to add?
I'm not sure if I missed it, but- I'm not sure if I missed it, but how long do these last, the longevity of the signs?
They're expected to last three to five years. We know they'll last three years, we're hoping for five. And once again, these are marine acrylic, you don't have to put wind holes in them, they don't fade, they don't tear, they go with the wind. These are, and by the way, these are thirty by seventy-two, so these are just about two and a half feet by six feet in length. But we expect them at three months at a time, we expect these to last at least three or four years, hoping for five. At which time, Parks and Rec can probably continue to build their fundraising account, the PRSC trust fund account, through future fireworks booth fundraising efforts. And hopefully, we can do this project again a few years down the road.
Very good. I'd say, I'd say two quick questions. I noticed the vendor, Street Decor, I know that they were the lowest vendor. Just a quick question, we didn't have any local when they were doing, are any of these other folks local? Because I know you said they're from, what did you say, Nevada? I just wanted to perhaps.
Reno, Nevada, yeah.
And no local vendors?
No, none of these local vendors, these vendors don't exist locally. I mean, I'm sure there's a few, but what, what I did is basically, I didn't just start sending out RFPs, I contacted various cities in the South Bay and outside of South Bay. I do listservs, League of California listservs, they give me feedback on who the top vendors are. But I really don't know, I mean, I'm sure there's people out here that do these, and they're probably small mom-and-pop shops possibly, but Street Decor is one of the biggest in the nation. We worked with them before on all of our other vinyl banners. And they just do a great, great job for us, we have great experiences with them. Besides them being low, there's just tons of other benefits on why they're better than the others that, that we have solicited as well, so.
Okay, very good. And my next question is concerning the design, I'm seeing the, the winter design come here. I was wondering if there's any opportunity for our youth, Longdale Youth Committee to be involved in like some design or something? Just, just a, just a thought of getting them involved, so that they can have ownership and our youth can have some ownership and everybody just have ownership.
Well, the Youth Advisory Committee isn't, isn't meeting right now because of the pandemic and other issues, but we, we can certainly find a way to run the designs through them somehow and give them some input. You know, you're right, the, the young folks do have a lot of creativity and different ideas. And that's, we can figure out a process to make that happen. And I'm assuming you'd want to make that happen as soon as, with the fall designs coming up.
Okay. And just I want to know, on the youth, while you're speaking about the Youth Advisory Committee, these young folks like to use Zoom as well, so they can probably hold meetings up here. I just realized that a couple of weeks ago, somebody told me that they were G, that I was kind of surprised by that. That's aside though. They want to ask anything else they want to add.
I do.
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. Mike, you said that the lifespan is three to five years. Is there going to be kind of some kind of warranty on these banners? So let's say a year and a half, you return them no cost to us?
Three-year warranty.
Okay.
Yeah, and if I, if I can, three-year, three-year. If I can add one more thing, you know, they're posted, you know, three, three months at a time. Generally, three to four months at a time. So adding those up, they should last really longer than, than five years, if you're going by those numbers. But yeah, they do have a very solid warning, warranty.
And then on the page, it shows the, the diagrams, at the bottom of the page says, "We are now responsible for any errors after approval." So are we going to have more than one set of eyes looking at this, once they?
No, no, I look at them, Parks and Rec looks at them, and shared them with the city manager as well. And you folks, I believe, may have seen them in your weekly packets along the way. The, the Parks and Rec Agenda Packet usually have information on this, so you probably would have seen them as they were being designed along the way, maybe once or twice.
Okay, all right.
But several eyes are looking at them, and yeah, we really take our time on these, and they have to be exact. Yeah, no errors, no errors. Thank you, Pat.
Anything else? We just approve this by consent of Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir, it's just a receive and file, so that's fine.
We will receive and file your report, Mr. Estes. Thank you, and Parks and Rec Commission and the staff for this program. Okay, next item on our agenda. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the appeals of a planning commission decision. Before we begin our, this public hearing, I'm going to ask the City Attorney to, to lay out for me the procedures for which we will govern ourselves under. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. Tonight, as you've said, sir, in front of the council, is an appeal of a planning commission decision. This is a land use matter that you will be hearing de novo, which means you're not looking at the planning commission decision to see whether it was right or wrong. You are looking at all of the evidence that's presented here tonight. Some of that will be presented by your staff. Your community development staff will go first, they will give a presentation. If you have questions, if you need clarification for them, you may ask them at the end of their presentation. That would not be the time for comments about the project, just questions to help clarify things in your mind. After that, the applicant, who tonight is also the appellant, will give a presentation of their own. In speaking with the representative for them, they believe that it will take them approximately thirty minutes, perhaps less, to give their full presentation and then to field similar questions from you. Again, no, no comments about what you think, just questions for clarification. Following that, the public will give any input that they have. The public will have the normal three-minute time limit that applies to all matters before the council. Following the public, the applicant has a chance to respond or rebut the public testimony. That should take five minutes, perhaps even less. At that time, the applicant is not giving you any new information, they're merely responding to what the public said. When the applicant's finished with that, the matter will go back to your staff for their final comments. They may take, they may want to add on to something that the public said. They may want to rebut something that the applicant said. But they will give you their final comments. And at that time, the mayor will close the public hearing, and it will go to the council for your discussion. Any additional questions of your staff or of the applicant, and then your final decision. So that's the process for a public hearing on an appeal like this. And if you have any legal questions, feel free to give, give them over to me. Any factual questions, your staff is ready to go. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir, I apologize for that. The public hearing, such as it is under the law, opens up when the applicant begins speaking. So the staff will give their report, and then you will open the public hearing for the applicant to begin offering their testimony. Thank you, sir, for that.
Absolutely. Okay, with that, it is now seven-thirty, let's, let's have the staff report on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Rafael Garcia, Associate Planner, will be providing the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Pollens Miles, members of the City Council. As the City Attorney indicated, the item before you is case number twenty-one twenty-five, an appeal request, appealing the planning commission's decision to deny case number twenty-seventeen for the development of a new seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine square foot express car wash facility located at the property, located at fifteen-four-one-three through fifteen-four-two-five Hawthorne Boulevard. The image that you can see on the presentation, as part of the presentation, is an aerial view of the site. Just to provide a little bit of context, the site is bounded by Hawthorne Boulevard to the east side. And the site is located between one-fifty-fourth and one-fifty-sixth street. And it is located on the west side of Hawthorne Boulevard. Here's an enlarged view. The property is surrounded by, for the most part, general commercial zoned properties. It is made up of multiple, multiple lots with a total of four buildings. The buildings have been used for a wide variety of reasons throughout the years. The site is approximately fifty-four thousand square feet in area. Now, some of the background, the property owner is the Roy J. Giles Trust. The applicant for the original request, as well as the appellant, is Timothy E. Berger. And the, there's two requests ultimately before you tonight. The first request is the applicant, or the appellant is requesting approval for a special use permit as well as a development permit. So there's two requests before you tonight. I'll be outlining the requirements for each as part of the presentation, and I'll be outlining specifically all the details pertaining to this. Now, as the City Attorney indicated, this item did go before the planning commission on July twenty-eighth during a public hearing. All the testimony was heard, planning did, did, taken a presentation, staff responded to questions. And after everyone's input, the planning commission decided to adopt resolution number twenty-fifteen, denying the project that's before, that's, that was taken before them that night. Thereafter, the applicant in August did submit an appeals request, appealing the decision that was made by the planning commission. The appellant is claiming that the project that is before you tonight is compatible and consistent with the findings as required by Title Seventeen of the Longdale Municipal Code. That's the reason why the project's before you tonight. As the City Attorney indicated, the project is now before the City Council as a de novo hearing. A little bit of additional context, the property is zone general commercial. The land use, the land use designation is commercial. This designation allows for a wide variety of commercial uses, including car washes, so long as a special use permit is approved. So the, the use that's before you tonight is allowed in the zone, but they need the special use permit approval. As I indicated earlier, the site is largely surrounded by general commercial zoned properties on all sides, with the exception to the west. There is residential on the west. Although the property to the south is zone commercial, there is residential along the second story as well. So just something to take into consideration. This is a street view, traveling southbound. If you were to look slightly to your right-hand side, you would see three commercial buildings. These are the buildings that are fronting the subject property that we're referencing tonight. It's made up of a wide variety of businesses. There has been a car dealership in the past. According to the appellant applicant property, there was, this was a site where there used to be, I believe, a lumberyard as well in the past. Currently, it's used as an income tax office. So there is one operational use that's currently, that's currently active. Again, additional view, again, looking from Hawthorne Boulevard, looking west. Again, this is the main building, commercial building, that was previously used as a used car dealership. The image that you're seeing now is a site plan. A site plan shows an aerial view of the proposed project. Now, as you can see, the yellow demarcation outlines the location of the building that's proposed. Now, what you're, what you're going to see is, along the north side of the property, you're going to see three queuing lanes. The purpose of the queuing lanes is to provide queuing prior to the cars entering the car wash tunnel. The car wash tunnel will have two openings, one on the west side and one on the east. The opening on the west side will act as an entrance, and the opening on the east side will act as an exit. Cars, cars that go through the car wash tunnel will go through the equipment. Once they exit, they will go around the property towards the south. And along the south side of the site, which is the bottom of the image, you'll see an additional queuing lane. That queuing lane will allow cars to drive around the site towards the west and enter the vacuuming parking stalls that are located on the south half of the, of the image. So that's basically how the car wash is going to function. Now, the interior floor plan of the car wash is made up mostly of a long car wash tunnel, which will house the equipment, the car washing equipment, as well as the blowers. They will also have an equipment room for the vacuuming equipment. They will have a miscellaneous utility room, bathrooms, office, lobby, and just a wide variety of things for, for the staff. Now, what you're seeing now are architectural elevations, specifically the south, as well as the east elevation. These are the elevations that were proposed to staff when we considered the project leading up to the July meeting. The architectural, the architectural design that was proposed was, relatively speaking, it's modern, more contemporary, with a flat roof design, sharp edges. It will be improved with stucco siding. And just a wide variety of treatments, including contemporary stone in order to enhance the appearance of the building, as well as a wide variety of architectural features. The buildings will also have a complimentary paint color. So as you can see, this is a three-D view of the property, of the proposed project and of the proposed building. To overall, what they were trying to do is enhance the appearance of the site. Again, you can see this from a different perspective, you can see the canopies that would be located over the vacuuming stalls. Now, as I indicated earlier, there's two requests before you tonight. One is the development permit, which is required because the project site is located in what is known as the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan. The second is a special use permit, which is required by Title Seventeen of the Longdale Municipal Code. Specifically, while there's several findings that have to be made, there's a total of five findings that have to be made, along with each request. As far as the development permit is concerned, staff was able to make findings for most of them, but not all of them. In order for the City Council to approve a project before, that's before you tonight, they would have to make all five findings. Specifically, the finding that I'm referring to is finding number five, located under section four of the resolution that's in your packet. You'll see the, you'll see those findings start on page five of the resolution, and the finding that I'm referring to is specifically on page six. Now, in order to approve the project, the project would have to not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to the properties or improvements in the vicinity. Tonight, tonight what I'm going to do is I'm going to provide some background and some data to show you how the project is not consistent with that specific finding. Now, as we move forward with the special use permit, the special use permit requires an additional five findings that have to be made. Now, as part of those five findings, I'm going to be focusing on two, two of the five findings that can be found under code section seventeen-twenty-eight-zero-fourteen, specifically finding A and finding E. Finding A, again, requires that the project not be detrimental to the public health or injurious to the city. Finding E requires that the project be consistent with the city's general plan. So those are the items that I'm going to be going over right now. Now, before I get into them, I wanted to provide a certain amount of context. As we all know, the state of California has identified a housing crisis throughout the state. The California Legislature has enacted a wide variety of new housing legislation, which has impacted virtually every city in the, in the state throughout the last handful of years. Now, you, the city of Longdale has unique challenges because of its size and because it's largely built out. The one thing to keep in mind is that there are limited development opportunities on vacant or underutilized properties in the city, simply because of the size of the city. Now, SCAG has a, has a, has RENA requirements. RENA stands for the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. This is mandated by state law. Now, when, when people look at RENA, they sometimes don't understand it. But RENA is nothing more than a, a law and a methodology that quantifies and assigns the need for housing for cities throughout the state. As part of the fifth cycle, there was a total of three hundred and eighty-one units that were allocated towards the city for the city of Longdale. You can see a breakdown on the screen. That breakdown is provided by income level, and there was a total of three hundred and eighty-one units that were assigned to the city. So when, once that happens, it is staff's job. So when, once that happens, it is staff's job to demonstrate through the housing element that the city can accommodate those additional units through our zoning. Now, the sixth housing cycle actually starts in late 2021. There was a total of 2,497 units, which is more than six times greater than the fifth cycle. So once again, staff has to get creative and figure out a way to allocate these almost 2,500 units throughout the city. And we do that obviously by updating the housing element and getting creative with the zoning in order to accommodate those additional units that would be possible by, by adopting the newly adopted, the new housing element. So the one thing to keep in mind is that as part of this sixth cycle, there's a severe increase in housing units that are being allocated towards the city. The project that's before you tonight, because it's being proposed to be developed as a car wash, as a car wash use only, threatens the ability to provide for the future housing needs of the city. As I said earlier, the city relies on current and underutilized properties. Keep in mind that the city is largely built out. And because of this, every property is absolutely necessary in order to help meet the future needs as required by the state. Now, the site that's before you tonight to be proposed to be developed as a car wash was identified as part of the housing inventory, as part of our previous housing, as, as part of our previous housing element. The development of the site as a car wash would remove it from that site inventory in that it would no longer be able to be developed for residential purposes. The site is suitable for providing housing. It is large and it would accommodate additional housing as part of it. Because of this, staff cannot support the project in that it would be detrimental to the public health and safety. The image that you're seeing here is an image that's provided as part of our housing element. It's a Landau sites inventory map that outlines specific properties that were identified that could accommodate these additional units that were required as part of the fifth housing cycle. As you can see, site number 13 was identified and it is the site that's before you tonight to be proposed as part of the car wash. Now, because it was identified as part of this housing inventory, staff cannot support all of the findings that are required as part of Title 17. Specifically, we cannot find that it's consistent with, with code section 172814E and that the city council must make the finding that the project is consistent with the general plan. Based on the information that was provided, as well as the fact that the project is not consistent with policy 6G, as well as goal number seven, staff cannot feel that, staff cannot feel that it can make the findings required in order to approve the project. Now, as part of this, we also looked at our housing element. So the one thing to keep in mind is, I indicated earlier, is that there are limited opportunities throughout the city. Because of this, there's limited capacity to meet the regional housing needs assessment numbers that are required by the state. Specifically, the city was also unable to determine that the project was consistent with the housing elements. Specifically, housing element goals one and two. With those specific points to keep in mind, staff is recommending that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution that's been provided as part of the packet. Resolution number CC 2110-042, denying the requests for the special use permit, as well as a development permit, in that not all of the required legal findings can be made as part of the project. That concludes the presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions that the members of the city council may have pertaining to this item and will be more than happy to answer any questions that the members of the public may have pertaining to this.
Thank you for that presentation. Let me open up the city council to see if there's any questions. Councilwoman, before we open up the public hearing. Councilwoman Swartz, you have anything?
I did have one quick question though. I noticed you made note that this is, this site is part of the, the housing stock inventory site for what we possibly build housing to affect our RENA numbers. I'm just curious as to know if for some reason, if the project wasn't approved, could the city compel the applicant to build on housing, even though it's been identified as a site appropriate for housing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We can't compel anyone to build. We can encourage and incentivize and we have housing set aside, but we can't, we can't force anyone to build or propose a mixed-use project or a high-density residential, but we definitely can encourage it. This site was identified in our housing element years ago, Friday of my staff were here at the city and was determined that was a site suitable for housing. For, and one other thing I'd like to add to, just reemphasize what Raphael brought up and I can't emphasize this enough. The general plan, the state law, has to be internally and externally consistent and any actions the city takes or staff recommendations need to be consistent with all the findings. Any of the elements that we have in the city's general plan and, I might add, the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan, both crucial documents to the city, they have to be internally and externally consistent. Otherwise, we cannot make the findings to approve the project. Absolutely, state law.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
I just have a quick question. You say that this was identified several years back. Were the developers notified that that was already in our plans?
We notified the developers, the city manager and myself had talked to the developers about moving forward with a different type of mixed-use type project and higher-invested use type project for the city that would be more compatible with the site. It's one of the few sites in the city that's fully squared up. It has only, it has deep access into the site and it's substantially to the southwest, which you can see, and to the west, southwest and northwest, it's, it's, and the south of the property bounded by residential. Unlike several other sites that are identified in the housing element, this site actually is substantially surrounded by residential.
And the other question is, how many units are we talking about approximately?
Well, we, we divide, it's about 1.5, 1.3 acre site, so we're looking at, I mean, depending on parking, which drives, as the councils were, drives the design and the mixed use, it'd be probably something like a mixed use. We could, somewhere based on our current density requirements, it's somewhere around 30 to 40 units. It's designated the 33 units on our housing element, but probably most likely with density bonuses, we could work with the applicant if they showed desire to come with an alternative use, which could be, you know, density requirements as well as potential commercial uses.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, I want to thank you for your presentation. At this time, it is 7:50. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. At this time, the public hearing is now open. I'm gonna invite the applicant to the podium to give a presentation.
Hello, my name is Nicole Kuklock-Welman and I'll start our presentation this evening. Thank you so much. We appreciate all the hard work that staff put into the presentation and I also appreciate the explanation of the general plan consistency, which is absolutely 100% true. I'd like to address a couple of things and I will introduce the Giles family in a minute to come up and tell you about the property. But what I would like to mention as we, as we start this conversation is that while we understand that RENA is a big pressure on a lot of small cities right now and when the numbers came down, there was a lot going on there. I teach planning at USC, this is my expertise and it has been a very big deal and we do empathize with that. The reality is the current plan does not provide for that and we are dealing with the current plan. Council for the developer will explain why the site is actually not RENA eligible and she'll walk through the details of that. But I just want to acknowledge, we do have great empathy for this issue. Unfortunately, Giles' family is not interested in selling. It's a family site and I actually would love to introduce Bill now to tell you a little bit about it. Thank you very much. We look forward to presenting.
Good evening. Mayor Paul and Miles, members of the city council. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address you on this subject. I'd like to point out first and foremost that this piece of property is family-owned. It's been in the family for over 70 years. We are not developers. We lease our properties. That's what we do. So I'll give you my presentation. My name is Bill Giles. My grandfather's name was Bill Giles and he purchased this piece of property over 70 years ago. Back then, the property was a lumberyard. In the years since, both my uncle Roy in the back, myself and my son, as well as other family members have worked on this property. Our family owned and operated a number of lumber and hardware stores up and down Hollywood Boulevard in Inglewood, Hawthorne and Landau. Over the years, family members have served on, as presidents of local chambers of commerce, chairman and sat on the board of local financial institutions and participated in local service groups, the Kiwanis Club and the Rotary Club, as well as other civic organizations. We have contributed to the making of Landau. Ever since big box lumber and hardware stores like Home Depot and Lowe's came into being, it forced the Royal Lumber Company, as well as our other lumber and hardware stores, out of the market. So we are left with these properties and we have leased a number of these properties to AutoZone, Home Depot, Dollar, Dollar Store and other such businesses. We're not a large real estate investment company looking to cash out on this property. We're just a couple of families who've worked on this piece of land to support our families and the city of Landau. We've tried our best to keep this property clean and up to code. It breaks our hearts to see what's become of the business that we worked so hard to maintain. Needless to say, the family is ecstatic to have found another family-owned operation to transform the former Royal Lumber Company into a beautiful, thriving business. We're here on behalf of the Giles family to ask your approval of the application before you to continue to provide services for the city of Landau. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brad Giles. I'm the son of Bill Giles and I'm the real estate agent that's been handling the leasing efforts for the property over the last five years. For the better part of five years, the property's been on the market for lease. We have been looking for a strong credit, long-term tenant. I personally have reached out to every credit tenant I could think of that may be interested in the site. I pulled up a map of the property and I pulled up the Fortune 500 list and I called down the entire list. As my dad had mentioned, we've successfully done ground leases with companies such as McDonald's, AutoZone, Dollar Tree and Chevron. That is our business model. We purchase land and hold it long-term. We are not flippers. We are not developers. Through our marketing efforts for this property, we were in negotiations with companies such as Buffalo Wild Wings, Aldi supermarket and a retail developer. We even were able to agree to terms and executed ground leases with DeVita Dialysis, who is a Fortune 200 company, but they were told by staff that a medical use would not be allowed. After two years, oh, excuse me, about two years ago, we received two offers to lease from car wash operators. After much deliberation and negotiation, we decided to move forward with Mr. Berger and his family. The more we got to know Tim Berger and his family, we knew they were the type of people we wanted to work with and the city of Landau would benefit from the presence in the community. We understand the city has identified a mixed-use or residential use as a desired use for the property, but we did not receive one single offer from a residential or mixed-use developer for the entire time the property's been on the market. The property has been marketed on all the major listing sites and had signs on the buildings. The owners are not developers. They are long-term holders who like to do long-term ground leases with amazing tenants. The only way for a mixed-use development to work for the site would be for the family to be forced to sell the land. As my father stated, the property has been in our family for over 70 years and the family has no intention of selling. The property means a lot to our family and we would not settle for a subpart tenant, not just for us, but for the heart of South Bay. I agree with the ownership that the proposed use and applicant are the best tenants we will meet. I also support the applicant and ask that you approve their application. We know from firsthand experience that Mr. Berger and the proposed car wash will be the best operator and developer of our family-owned site that we intend to own for many generations to come. Thank you.
Mayor Paul Miles, council members, my name is Timothy Berger and I'm the managing partner of Super Duper Car Wash. Thank you for having us out today. First two slides will be slides that you've seen before, if I can. Oh, there we go. So you're familiar with the site. It's definitely ripe for development. By the way, the Giles family are some of the nicest people I've ever met. They are a great asset to your city and we are very proud to have been selected by them for this project. So the site view, you've seen them, a couple of existing buildings. And our plan is to not only develop the nicest car wash in the city of Landau, but it will be the premier car wash in the South Bay. As you can see by the work that we've done with staff over approximately two years, we met with staff and they, they helped us refine the, the design of the building to be modern, contemporary design with nice treatments to the building to really enhance the look of, of the property. This building gives people an opportunity to stop in your city. I know that Mayor Paul Miles talked about Landau being a drive-through city and needing reasons to stop. This here is a great reason for, for people going through your town to stop in your town. When they stop for a car wash, they'll stop and get gasoline, groceries, restaurants, coffee and the like. It's been brought up that there's five existing car washes in the town, so I just wanted to walk you through them in case you haven't seen them recently to give you a comparison with what we're proposing. So this is one of the nicer car washes that's the closest to us. It's Bellagio Car Wash. It's right around the corner. There's a self-service car wash. By the way, Bellagio's a full-service car wash, not an express car wash that we're talking about where you drive your car through the car wash and then you do your own vacuum and I'll talk about some of the benefits of that later. The, the Landau self-service car wash is a wand wash where it has a limited capacity. There's an excellent 100% hand car wash. There's also a hand wash, auto body shop and then a Lightning Express car wash that's on the other side of the 405 from where we're proposing our, our property. So as you can see, we, we provide a great user experience and a great amenity to the, the residents of the town of Landau. Raphael did a great job going over the site plan. The only thing I'm gonna point out is at the bottom of the site plan, there's, like, like was mentioned, that there is residential to the south or to the, the bottom of the picture. We put in a buffer in there. We put in a buffer in there specifically to give further distance from residential units. So the sound study that was done in the car wash is that it's actually quieter than what you're going to find from the noise from your Hawthorne Boulevard. So it's a very low impactful site. It meets all the requirements that staff put forward to us in terms of sound. Project elevations, you've seen some of these pictures before. Just a very nice contemporary look and a nice addition to Hawthorne Boulevard. Seen the project models? Big part, community engagement. You know, it's just a very compatible use for a car wash to be engaged in the community. I was hearing your presentation on your banner program, and I look forward to sponsoring them. I don't know if you're taking applications tonight. Maybe we can meet afterward, so... But it's a great way for school athletic fundraisers, PTA groups, school clubs, and, you know, city sponsorships. It's just a, it's just good business. A car wash, you know, has been a staple of fundraisers for, I think, since Henry Ford invented the automobile. I've also been asked, what kind of investment are we talking here? So to date, for site entitlements, studies, architects, plans, we've spent over $350,000. That's money hard dollars spent over the last two years, and that's just money spent by us. That's not money that the Giles family has also spent on the project to make it happen. The building and the equipment, with some of the increased cost of construction, the building now is in the neighborhood of $5.7 million plus the equipment. All the equipment is state-of-the-art, and I'll have someone talk about the equipment here at a later date. The technology that's going on in the car wash business for the equipment is just incredible just over the past couple of years in terms of quiet, water reclamation, et cetera. The $5.7 million for the building and for the equipment and the site improvements is in addition to the value of the land, which is in the five to six million dollar range. So the city of Lawndale is looking at a total investment of almost $12 million on this project. It really will be the premier car wash in the South Bay, not just the city of Lawndale, but the entire South Bay. Will be a net job creator. We fully realize that cities need money to operate, and we've offered to do a development agreement. Initially, we were told that it wasn't required, but we are here today to affirm that we are not only willing, but eager to do a development agreement with the city to help fund needed operations. We believe in this project. We're putting our money where our mouth is. The environment, the noise study, staff's report shows that we meet or exceed all the Lawndale requirements. I know during the planning commission meeting that some local residents were concerned about hours of operation, unlike a Buffalo Wild Wings. Our hours of operation are daylight hours. So in the summertime, seven in the morning to seven at night. In the wintertime, we close a little bit earlier. People just don't wash their cars, you know, in the dark. We recycle water. I mean, right now, there's various issues that the city is facing. We all know that water is going to be an issue going forward for the long haul. The nice thing about our car wash, the modern car washes, is the great amount of water that they recycle. So unlike a residential washing a car in your yard or some of the older car washes, we have a large component of recycled water, and our equipment vendor can talk about some of those here after I'm done. Solar, solar's big. Obviously, we'll want to do solar on the project for lots of reasons. One, it just makes economic sense, you know? It's good for the environment, but it also just makes economic sense. So there'll be a solar component. And additionally, we're more than willing to put up an eight-foot-high fence along the back. We met with a couple of the people who had spoke at the last meeting, at the planning commission meeting, and just to make sure that they know that we're willing to make it as quiet as possible, we're willing to put up an eight-foot barrier in the back of our property. And luckily, I think Roy planted the trees that are next to the apartment building. So I think the story was that they had a bunch of trees that they had gotten one year for the lumberyard, and not all of them sold. So Roy went out and personally hand dug all the holes, and now we have twenty-foot trees out there. Thank you very much. I think that's a true story. Yeah? That's the story that he told me, so... Health, obviously, with the current pandemic, having a zero-contact sale system where none of our employees will be inside your car during the car wash. You drive up, you pay contactless payment, you drive your car through the car wash, the equipment cleans your car for you, you drive into the stall to vacuum, you're not interacting with any employees from the car wash. It's not like the full-service car washes that you have now where you're the one inside your car, touching your car, so no spreading of germs. We also offer premium cloth towels to self-clean the car interior so that when you show up to the car wash, you'll have all the equipment you need to just do a great job in your own car. The, one of the questions is what other locations we're in. City of Industry, we actually started our process with the City of Industry about sixteen months ago, and I'm proud to say that we were approved five to zero by the city council there, and we're hoping to pick up our building permit maybe even by the end of this week. City of Industry was in a similar situation where they had about five existing car washes, but they wanted to upgrade the stock and give the city yet another amenity to bring people in to then frequent the other businesses in town. So it's a big multiplier effect when you have a reason for people to stop in your town and then use the other businesses there. So it's not just beneficial to us, it's beneficial to the businesses that are also part of your community. Tustin, Tustin's a great community down in Orange County. We've been open there a little over a year and very high reviews. You can look us up on Yelp, Google, Groupon. We're under a different name there. We're under Gold Green Express Car Wash. This one was a remodel. The Super Duper Car Wash is the premier car wash in the South Bay. So we're going with new branding for your car wash that we're proposing on your site. The queuing analysis, when we worked with the city and staff early on in the project, I was given two directives. One is there can't be any cars queued up onto Hawthorne Boulevard. So we went above and beyond on the queuing. We have three lanes of queuing. Raphael walked you through that. So we have, you could put thirty Chevrolet Suburbans in our queue lanes. Obviously, if you have smaller cars, Chevy Malibus, things like that, that you can store even more cars on property in the queuing. Not only do we have queuing on the entrance to the car wash with the three lanes of queuing, Raphael pointed out, on the exit of the car wash waiting for the vacuums, we have another lane of queuing. So we were given direct orders by the staff not to have any queuing back onto Hawthorne Boulevard, so we went above and beyond on the queuing. The second item that was a showstopper to get their support was the noise impact. And we've been blessed because the technology for car wash equipment has evolved over time, but we not only are taking advantage of time and the new car wash equipment, we're also buying the highest-quality car wash equipment that we can find in terms of noise impact to the surrounding members. So we have various design features of the project that kind of talk to it. What I'd like to do, if you don't have any questions for myself, I'll be available after the end here. I'd like to turn it over to our attorney, and she'll take it from here.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. My name is Sherri Bondstall. I'm Jeffrey Mangles, and I represent the applicant, Tim Berger. As you can see, this high-quality car wash is a welcome addition to the neighborhood and will provide clean, efficient, and a quiet use on the site. The owner, the Giles family, are longtime business and property owners in Lawndale and sought a tenant that would make a significant personal investment and become an active member of the Lawndale community. Tim Berger and his team have worked with the city staff for more than two years to design a project that exceeds all city standards and have responded positively to every design request from the city staff. The city council staff report specifically states that the project informs to the development standards of the general commercial zone as part of the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan, which sets forth requirements for car washes. The chart in the staff report shows that the project meets all of the standards for lot size, lot coverage, front, side, and rear yard setbacks, height, parking, and landscaping. And as Tim Berger stated, he is more than willing to enter a development agreement or to comply with any additional city requirements. In addition, the car wash project qualifies for a sequel exemption as an infill project because it has no significant environmental impacts and will not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. So as you know and received, there was a traffic study done for this project and a noise study, and it was determined that there were, in the traffic analysis by HKA dated February 20th, 2020, it showed that the project queuing would provide sufficient space for the peak traffic times, and these studies were emailed to the council. The number of parking spaces was requested by the Director of Community Development to meet one stall for every 250 square feet of gross area. This is more than twice the amount of parking for vacuums that is typically required. The car, as stated by Tim Berger and his team, the car wash is designed specifically with high-end fan and includes insulation systems that minimize sound outside the car wash. The acoustic study by MD Acoustics dated July 27th, 2020, determined that the noise level complied with the city of Lawndale general plan noise elements for residential multifamily and commercial noise levels. The project includes the eight-foot CMU wall enclosure around the vacuum pumps, incorporates solid roof cover over the vacuum bays, and uses a 12 IDC stealth boiler system and lines the exit of the tunnel with acoustically absorbent material. So the study shows that minimal sound will be audible past the block wall on the resident's neighbor's property, and as stated, it will be even quieter than the noise that comes from Hawthorne Boulevard. As also stated in the staff report, the project design features provide architectural interest in the elevations from the public right-of-way, and these include a prominent entrance incorporating pink colors and facade articulation, avoiding blank walls, varying the roof height, and being a single-story development. And it also includes over 7,000 square feet of landscape area, which is more than twice the required amount. So there's no evidence in the record that the project will create any environmental impacts. So as stated by Mr. Garcia, the sole concern of the planning commission and the city staff is that the project has been allocated to meet your RINA numbers. So however, as also stated by the city, you cannot force any property owner to create housing developments on their site. The city housing production requirements do not justify denial of a commercial project that meets all of the requirements of a special use permit and a development permit in a commercial zone. So this site does not even qualify to be identified for RINA allocation. First, the property is not available for housing development. As the property owner told you, the property is leased by a long-term family owner to a tenant for development. There is no housing developer that would lease a 1.3-acre site to construct a project that has affordable housing. It's not financially viable, and for the past five years when the property has been available, no housing developers have come forward and wanted to lease the site, and we don't identify any that would be able to do this and make the numbers pencil. The city did not consider the ownership structure or the financial feasibility of the housing development when they identified the site as a RINA site for the 2021 allocation. Second, the property does not qualify as a new RINA site in 2021 because it's a non-vacant site and was already in the prior housing location. So under Government Code 65583.2, which is more fully described in the HCD Guidebook that I emailed to the city today, and that's dated June 10th, 2020, non-vacant sites that were used in previous planning periods do not qualify for RINA allocation, and the intent is to remove these sites that are not likely to be developed with housing. So the city staff report includes a section from the 2014 housing allocation, which was described by Mr. Garcia, that shows that the site was already identified in the 2014 RINA numbers. And because you identified it in those RINA numbers, and it wasn't developed in the last seven years, and it's a non-vacant site, you cannot identify it in your new RINA numbers to make it qualify. And in the HCD guidelines that I distributed today on page 24, it specifically states that underutilized sites, unoccupied sites, blighted improvements and parking areas do not qualify as vacant. So this does not qualify as a vacant site that could be used in two cycles of the housing element. It can only be used in one cycle, and you've already used it in your prior cycle. Finally, the RINA allocation is not a mandate to construct housing on the site, but I identify identification of potential development. So the city cannot design a commercial project in a commercial zone solely because the city had identified the site for potential residential development. So I'm gonna... So as Mr. Garcia previously said, here are the requirements for a special use permit. The city determined that the project complied with all of these required findings, except that they determined that it was injurious to public health and welfare, which is A, and that it was not consistent with the city's general plan in their housing element, which is E, solely because there was a proposed housing development in the prior housing element on the site. So the city staff report says that because our car wash use would preclude future development on the housing site, it is not consistent with the housing element. Well, as stated above, the site doesn't qualify for future listing in the housing element, and second, the listing does not create a housing mandate. You can still, you're still allowed to have commercial uses under the zoning and under the general plan designation. Here, the general plan designation is commercial, the zoning is general commercial, and a car wash is specifically permitted in the zone with a special use permit. Similarly, it doesn't create an overall public health requirement. Whether or not a project is detrimental to public health and safety is based on the project as proposed. The car wash application includes noise and traffic studies that show conclusively that there's no significant environmental impact on public health and safety caused by the car wash as designed. And under law, any prohibition of a commercial use in a commercial zone where housing is not otherwise viable is considered a taking without compensation under the state and federal constitution. So in summary, we request that you approve the car wash as designed in compliance with state law. The project is consistent with the Hawthorne Avenue specific plan that supports quality car washes specifically. The high-end, efficient, and quiet car wash will provide a significant benefit to the community residents and businesses that seek a fast and environmentally friendly way to clean their cars and will draw commuters to stop in Lawndale for car wash and other commercial needs. There are a significant number of residents and business owners that support and need a convenient automated car wash in the commercial zone on Hawthorne Boulevard, and we have submitted more than 28 support letters to you that show this. As stated, Tim Berger and his family look forward to making a significant investment and becoming part of the Lawndale community, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
As a matter of clarification, because I know we can't bring up new facts...
Just as a matter of clarification, because I know we can't bring up new facts coming up, but staff said that the developers were told that mixed-use development would be allowed. I don't know who, what developers are talking about. They never told the ownership anything about a mixed-use development being allowed until those RINA numbers came out a year ago. And Mr. Berger started his application over two years ago, and we had very strong support from staff. We have emails that we could furnish to everybody showing that support. Just when those numbers came out, it changed, so I just wanted to correct that statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have some comments, either the applicant or the staff, the staff wanted to... Let's do this first. Let's ask the staff if they want to address any...
Actually, sir, just again with kind of the uniqueness of an appeal, the next step would actually be to have the public, offer public testimony before we get back to staff. If you do have questions for the applicant, not comments, but questions, you can ask any questions of the applicant. Otherwise, we should go to the public for their testimony, and then we'll move on to the next half.
Okay. With that being the case, let's move on to public comment. Anyone would like to provide any public comment in this matter? We should swear in witnesses, right? Anyone who wants to make public comments?
No, sir. I don't think that we need to swear in tonight. I can speak to that off the record, but I think the public can give testimony as they do. Thank you, sir.
Let's proceed with anyone who wants to speak to this body on this matter. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for considering this application and appeal. My name is Chris Miller. I'm a local car wash developer and consultant. I work with car washes all over Southern California. I just wanted to speak to the desire of Tim Berger and the Berger family to develop the premier South Bay car wash and really make this a destination car wash, not just a neighborhood car wash. He has requested the latest technology on the water recycling so that we're able to recycle more water than any other car wash around. Also, the latest sound dampening technology for all of the dryer systems that we'll be installing in the car wash, and also a special software module for fundraising program so that he can do community fundraising with all of the local high schools and any other community services that he'd like to support through fundraising. This is something that we've done successfully in many communities. We developed one that was very similar to this in Los Alamos. It has been a great addition to their community and really brought life back to the center and adjacent businesses in the area surrounding the car wash. I just want to also add that I've worked with Tim before, and he is a very nice man and a great family, and you guys would be very lucky to have him in this community. I think he would be a great asset. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Miller? Yes, sir.
Randall Abram. When I first started attending city council meetings, Lawndale seemed to be overpopulated with dental offices on Hawthorne Boulevard. Since that time, Lawndale has seen some of those offices leaving the city and being replaced with revenue-generating businesses such as restaurants, a Target, and a new hotel on Horizon. Is Lawndale now in danger of becoming the car wash capital of the South Bay? Within a half-mile radius of where I live, there is a regular car wash, a coin-operated do-yourself car wash, and a drive-thru car wash. There are at least two to three others in a city of a two-mile radius. Lawndaleans must have the cleanest cars in Los Angeles County. The prime real estate on Hawthorne Boulevard should be developed for more needed purposes. More shopping opportunities could bring additional revenue to the city, but as the staff report indicates, the state of California in identifying a housing shortage has created serious building mandates in California cities. As such, this particular property has been identified and being of potential location for up to 41 units. A mixed-use development with shops along the units would be ideal at this location on Hawthorne Boulevard. There's a metro stop a few feet away on Hawthorne Boulevard, and of course, the freeway is minutes away. As there are few properties this size in Lawndale, it should be developed to its maximum potential. One of the speakers pointed out that the City of Industry has five car washes. The City of Industry has a population of 219 people and is at 12-mile radius, so comparing those five car washes to what's in Lawndale, this is kind of not a fair comparison. Plus, he mentioned five car washes. There's actually a sixth one that he missed on the corner of Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Inglewood Boulevard. It's kind of you drive in and you get your car washed. So, this would be a seventh car wash in Lawndale. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to provide any comments in this matter? Okay, then I'm gonna ask the staff to provide any feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, in response, I'll keep it kind of general, but there are quite a few items that were brought up by all the members of the applicant's team. First and foremost, I just want to say we appreciate working with the applicant, but we have to disagree. The reason for the denial is because of what we mentioned in the staff report. The significant overarching issue was the housing being designated as a housing site for utilization for housing. However, the applicant did bring up quite a few issues that were not brought up in the staff report, but since they brought it up, I'll address them single-handedly. First and foremost, Mr. Giles got up and said that they tried to keep the property clean. Well, that's absolutely not true. Last year, the city was notified about illegal use of a unlawful and unpermitted contractor's storage yard. They're using heavy equipment in the back. Upon staff's arrival, Mr. Garcia and myself went to the site along with a building inspector, and we observed also illegal tow truck yard being operated and fenced off. We also observed cars from an auto body being stored on the site. In addition, we found a 1,000-gallon storage tank that was leaking out of the ground. Luckily, there was no contamination found, but we did find these issues, and they were significant issues where the fire department had to be called out, and the applicant, not the applicant, I'm sorry, the tenant of the property, had to be asked to remove the 1,000-gallon storage tank because it jeopardized life and safety. It was hooked up to a generator that was run by gas next to a 1,000-gallon diesel-fueled tank. So, there were a lot of issues. Plus, people were living in both of the commercial buildings that we asked them to move right away. Now, moving down to the sound study. So, yeah, we didn't bring up the sound study because the overarching issue was the housing element, but staff was not satisfied with the sound study. That's why we put out for RFP, a request for a third-party review of the sound study because we felt that the sound study was going to impact residents. In fact, the residents of the apartment building to the south of the property had mentioned they were concerned with noises from vacuum cleaners, people making racket with cars, CO2 emissions. They brought that up as well, but specifically, they brought up the noise generated from these car washes. They use huge power plants for sucking up these big areas where they suck them. They make them soundproof, but they create a lot of noise, and the residents were concerned. So, that's why staff had brought that issue up, but wasn't in the staff report at the start. The traffic study, there was no traffic study. That was a queuing study. We asked the applicant, we wanted a traffic study done, so we went out for RFP, request for proposal, to prepare a traffic study for the site. That was not done. And finally, and least the best of all, the fiscal impact study. We asked the applicant to do a fiscal impact study, and we were concerned about the type of use going into the site and generating uses that generate sales tax for the city. Let me be blunt, in Hawthorne Plan and the general plan, we're fortunate. Our general plan has one extra element that many cities don't have, an economic element that was great forethought thinking of the council years back because it says that all land uses shall make the city fiscally consistent and have net positive generating sales tax. Car washes, if you notice, the applicant brought this up, they want to enter into development agreement, car washes generate very little, if any, kind of sales tax for the city. So, I'll go on to that. That's one of, some of the items. The SUP, I want to bring this up again. The SUP means, it doesn't mean it's permitted. It means it's allowed, subject to conditions of approval. That's what it means. It doesn't mean it's allowed. It means our Planning Commission, based on the financing and recommendation of staff, can determine if it's a compatible use in that area, and they found it incompatible. They found it was not consistent with the city's general plan. It doesn't mean it has to be, it doesn't mean the council has to approve it. It means it's not really allowed, but with special exceptions, the city would allow it if they deem so. Again, the sound study, I went over that. The 41 units, let's talk about that. I have developers pounding at my door, at the city hall door, looking for vacant sites to build mixed-use or housing developments. Let me give you an example. The 41-unit project, that's a mixed-use project. We have several too pending projects down in the south end of the city. They're mixed-use project with housing and commercial. The corner property that's not developed, the developer wants to do mixed-use. They've been pressuring the city manager and I have been trying to meet with them to come up with a plan to maybe potentially for something down the road, but they've been pushing for mixed-use. Everybody knows that mixed-use helps pencil out. Our land values are so high here, they're escalated very high. So, in order to make it pencil out, they need density, they need relief on parking, and they also need some commercial. And those combinations make it very difficult. So, for the housing that comes through, but we do have people that are interested in developing sites for mixed-use. I mean, I have knocked on my door all day. They want to build mixed-use in there. They want to build Lawndale. They're interested in developing the site. I understand what the property owners mentioned there, that they're not interested. Now, the prior housing location, that's correct. We checked in that they brought that up at the Planning Commission. It was designated under our previous housing fifth element, but HCD allows, and I'll re-bring in the sixth housing element, you can re-designate the site, but we have to allow it to be permitted by right. What that means, if a developer comes in with a housing development, the council and the Planning Commission would not review it. They would be subject, it'd be subject to permitted by right, meaning all of our development standards and approved at the staff level. That's the policy of HCD. We're updating our housing element now. We have clarification from our consultant as well as HCD on that matter. The site, yes, the site has been vacant, as I mentioned. It's not by right. I want to compare, I did a little analysis of the City of Industry in comparison to our great city. The City of Industry is 12 square miles. We're 1.9 square miles. They have approximately three to four car washes. They're 12 square miles. The City of Tustin, just south of here, down off the five, it's almost 12. It's 11.12 square miles. It's three times the size of Lawndale, and they have only three car washes. As the resident mentioned, Mr. Abrams, we have several, we have like five to six car washes. There's an over-concentration of car washes in the city. It's not part of the staff report, but the bigger, broader picture is what do we want to see in the city? The Hawthorne Plan, I brought the plan. It was a great plan. Some people don't like the plan. It's a mixed-use plan. The council years ago decided what they wanted to see. They wanted to see mixed uses cafes out on the street. I mean, the city manager and I talk about this all the time. He wants to see mixed uses with cafes out on the street where people can walk up with wide sidewalks. That's what the vision of this Hawthorne Plan is, but there are exceptions. The council allowed exceptions with special use permit clearance and special conditions. That concludes my rebuttal. If you have any questions, they'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you for that response. I'm gonna give this opportunity for the applicant to provide any rebuttal if they would like to do so at this point.
This is Sheri Bondstall again, speaking as representative of the applicant. I'm gonna address some of the issues, and the property owners want to respond to some of the other comments that are made. So, first, it was requested that the applicant do a traffic study and do an economic study. We stated that there was no need for an economic study. We would confirm that there were not significant taxes and other funds that were generated by a car wash, but that it brought much, many other community benefits separate from being a strong tax base. And then, second, we offered to do a traffic study, and the city agreed that we did not have to do a traffic study at the time because the Planning Commission was recommending denial based on the RINA numbers. So, we agreed to do a traffic study. We're willing to do a traffic study if you need one in order to do the car wash, but it was determined that it wasn't necessary. And we also made an agreement with the city that none of us would discuss the traffic study that wasn't done or the economic study that wasn't done as a part of agreeing to move forward with the project. And so, that's the reason that we discussed the queuing study. We called it a traffic study. We did not do a full traffic study of the amount of traffic generated. We did solely an internal queuing study. And then, again, we have been looking for developers for the site. Although there are many developers, residential developers, that might come to the city and want a large piece of property, they don't want a small one-acre piece of property, and they do not want to lease. And so, if you want a housing development on the site, you have to force a mom-and-pop organization that has owned the property for more than 70 years to sell to a commercial real site developer. That's the only way you're gonna get real housing development on the site because it's the only way that it would pencil. And then, in response to HCD stating that you're allowed to rezone the site to allow housing, the city is required to review the application before them based on the date that it was filed and deemed complete. This application was filed and deemed complete on September 20th. It was filed two years ago. It was deemed complete September 4, 2020. That's the deemed-complete date. You have to look at your current zoning that's in effect on that date. You can't consider potentially future rezoning of this property in two to three years to make it compliant with what state law would allow. It has to be what's before you today, what you can develop today. Currently, the new 2021 RINA numbers are coming out, and this site doesn't qualify, and it's not in the best interest of the city to require a property owner to sell their property, which you aren't authorized to do. And I want the property owners to discuss the other issues relating to the use. Okay?
I want to address specifically the statement that the family wasn't, in fact, trying to keep, take care of the property. There was a mention of heavy equipment and dirt on the back lot at the lumberyard. The tenant that was in the front building actually had a contract with a city contractor that was hauling dirt from some of the streets in the city and wanted to store it in the back lot. So, it was a contractor who was working for the city that approached our tenant and offered him money to allow them to store the dirt on the back lot. So, I'm not sure that statement really flew. As far as people living in the buildings, we were told that there were squatters in the building. We spent upwards of $30,000 having those buildings emptied, sterilized. Everything that was in it, barbecues, couches, junk, just all sorts of junk, we hauled away at our expense. We boarded the buildings. We haven't had a tenant in there for two years. The last tenant we had was the guy who made arrangements with a equipment, a guy with a diesel tank. He was evicted. We got rid of him. So, we have spent a lot of time, energy, and effort to take care of those buildings. We're looking to get a decent tenant in there. Right now, we haven't gotten any rent in over two years. We've spent thousands of dollars boarding them up, emptying them out. Somebody goes in and breaks into them again. We've got to send a crew down there to board it up. We've got new padlocks on the gate. My Uncle Roy went down there the other day, and there was a new padlock on the gate. I'm not sure. It's maybe a city padlock. I'm not, it's not ours. So, we're doing our best to take care of the property.
Thank you. Briefly, I just want to talk on a couple of points that were made by Mr. Moore, and I can tell emotions are getting a little high. I think Sean got a little aggressive, and we're taking offense to some of the things he said. And I want to make sure we're all cool-headed and addressing what we're all talking about here. But what he said frankly was not true. And disregarding the tenant, I think that we had a tenant, when staff found those violations, we immediately got them off the property. It was probably within a couple of weeks, we had tenants that had been there for a while removed. We had them do phase-two studies where they drill in the dirt, test the dirt, to make sure that there was no impact on the ground. Any of those violations were unbeknownst to us, and as soon as they were brought to attention by staff, we immediately removed those tenants, had them fix every problem. And as my dad said, you know, one of the issues was, it was, the tenant was approached by a city subcontractor, I believe, who was doing work on the freeway or the roadway, or excuse me, the street widening, and they stored city dirt on the back of our land unbeknownst to us. And as soon as it was brought to our attention, we got it removed and fixed right away. So, the fact that someone would say that we don't take care of the property, I mean, you can look at it now. It's been vacant for, I would say, maybe closer to a year, maybe not two years, not that long. But we spent significant time, my Uncle Roy and I personally drilled boards up, put them up to try to keep it safe. It was broken into. We hired a contractor, and then we put up boards again, and staff said the boards would be on the inside of the windows and covered with the material. So, we paid again, had the contractor come out and move the boards to the inside. So, we have gone above and beyond to try to keep it safe, and the main issue is safety. Safety for the community, safety for... And the main issue is safety, safety for the community, safety for everybody. And we've gone above and beyond to keep it that way. And as soon as any issue's been brought to the family, we have addressed it very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I do agree with the last gentleman who spoke that there are emotions running right now. I'd like to ask if it's, if the council's okay with this. If prior to you closing the public hearing and the council beginning deliberations, if you would consider continuing the matter open, which means that additional testimony might be given, and continuing it open to your first meeting in November, that will give the community development department and my office time to review the additional factual evidence that was provided by the applicant tonight and in the documents that they delivered today, as well as the arguments that were made on the record tonight. And we would be able to prepare really a full briefing of the arguments that were made and of the documents that we received that would help you reach a decision. So if it's the will of the council, it would be my request that you would continue this matter open to your first meeting of November, sir.
Okay. Thank you for that suggestion, Mr. City Attorney. I do, let's hear from the council, is there a willingness from the council to continue the matter? I think we do have a lot of information that we should digest, and let's hear from the council. Yes, ma'am?
I think that that would be a good idea. I think I need more information, and I need a legal to go through some of this with me.
Okay, with that, let's, yes, sir.
This is for the lady attorney. You said that you had 28 letters of support, already letters. And could you tell me how many of the letters of support are Lawndale residents?
I didn't speak to that. We...
Can I appear on the record, please? Because it looks like to me it's all family and friends on these letters.
Yes, we approached family, friends, and some local community members, and some of the local business owners, who will remain off the record, were afraid to give letters of support because of potential staff repercussions.
That didn't happen in Lawndale.
I did, well, okay. And so to answer your question directly, most of the letters are from family and friends that do not live in the state of Lawndale. I think the first one that was included was one of the family members who was a member of the Lawndale School District for 23 years. And those, a lot of the board members with the school district and worked closely, and this is close to heart to them. So, you know, we tried our best to reach out to people, and that's what we came up with. Thank you.
Nicole Kuklock-Walbun for the applicant. I just want to add that at the first hearing, I did meet a neighbor who was concerned. I met with him offline. I sent him copies of the plans. I sent him my information. I did reach out to him. I explained to him the noise study and the other items, and I have not heard back. I can send that email to you if you'd like. But I have spoken to any neighbor who has acknowledged any sort of concern with the site. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I entertain a motion that we continue this item for our first meeting in November.
I will make that motion.
Okay, the motion is made by Mayor Protem Kearney that we continue this item, keep this item open to the first meeting in November.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion? With that, I would ask the council to please vote on the motion.
Motion passes again, Mr. [inaudible].
So that we will continue this item and agendize this item for the first meeting in November. First meeting in November. I want to thank the applicant and, I don't know, she came to make comments on this matter. Thank you. So now we're at item J, city manager's report.
Excuse me. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As we are trying to get back to normal and begin holding community events again, I just wanted to briefly remind the public of our next upcoming community event. On Saturday, October 30th, the city is planning for our Halloween Haunt. It will be a little bit different than previous years, but we will be holding a trick-or-treat trail. There will be stage entertainment, music from a disc jockey, food vendors, games for kids, arts and crafts, and other enjoyable things for families. So I just, again, wanted to let the community know that we're trying to get back to normal, and that is one of our events coming up. And we will also be having events for the holidays, and as we get closer to those dates, we'll make those announcements at that time. And we will be putting out information regarding this event on our social media and other communications platforms to remind everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Now, item eight, items from the mayor and council members. Let's hear from Councilwoman [inaudible].
I did attend last month the board of directors' meeting for the South Bay Cities Council of Government. I'm trying to remember what was on the agenda. Sorry, it's a lot going on. We got an update regarding LA County public health official updates. You know, we're kind of over the Delta variant. However, they're recommending everybody not get too excited because, you know, there's other variants out there. You know, take that as you will, you know? And then, I did attend the grand opening for a new business, Farfield Beer Company, last Wednesday. Very excited. It's a young, two young, or one young business owner and his wife, and coming up with some really cool flavors and stuff. So it'll be a nice place for people to socialize. And I think that's all I had for this past week. I'll pass it along.
Councilwoman [inaudible].
I attended the Cal Cities Conference on September 23rd, the 23rd, October 7. Sorry, my microphone, I guess, didn't work. During that time, they had different topics that helped me as a first-year council member. Also, I took my harassment and ethics courses there. So it's, it's good. I don't have to take it with you guys now. And I attended the Farfield Beer Company ribbon-cutting, and I recommend to everybody to go and support the local business. Young family, starting small, but hopefully it will grow into a good, strong company here in Lawndale.
Very good. Councilwoman [inaudible].
I have nothing to... Yeah.
Councilwoman [inaudible].
I have nothing to report.
That's funny, because I was looking at your husband, and I was like, I just murdered you guys. That's it from Pat Kearney. No, she says she doesn't have anything to add.
I also attended the Farfield Brewery ceremony. They gave samples to the family. So after I wrote, I gave mine to my director. I don't care. I'm just happy I built it.
I'm glad you added that and not me.
No, I enjoy it. I enjoy it. It's a nice start.
I too went to the ribbon-cutting for Farfield Brewery. Very nice establishment, like I said, young gentleman, he's a master brewer, young as well. Also got an opportunity to see them in action. They had a tent in an event in Gardena just recently, I guess it was Sunday, Saturday. So we welcome them to our community and think they're going to do very well. Those establishments are pretty popular, having a micro brewery where you can come and get these different flavors for those who drank beer. I don't drink beer myself, but I'm always intrigued by the, and I didn't even know this until maybe about five years ago, that there was such thing as different flavored beers. I had no idea that people was drinking flavored beers all along. But it's pretty intriguing, and we wish them much success here in the city of Lawndale. And people usually come from different cities to go to these breweries. And, you know, they have like a co-following, if you will, where people kind of follow you to many different cities, or if you are vending, they have different events or what have you, and they know that you're vending, they usually come out. So I think it's going to be a pretty successful venture. So congratulations to them. Speaking of Gardena, I attended Gardena's, I think it was called Cigar, Cigar Beer and Wine, something, something to that effect, you know? What, where there's no cheese involved here. It wasn't that high-class beer cheese, but no, it was a very good event. They had every, that's not digging anything, but, you know, it wasn't the West Side. But it was a very good event. Apparently, they have this event every year, and I've been invited a few times, but it never actually went until this past Saturday. Very good event. It's kind of a relaxing event, death for grown folks, you know? So it was a good event for grown folks, a lot of vendors, music, you know, fine cigars and wine. So it was a really nice event. And the event was a fundraiser, actually, for their, they have an Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's center. And so I'll fund those to that center to help those folks out. That was a very good event, so I look forward to going to that again. I also attended the WAMAS meeting in the city of Hawthorne. The county assessor, Jeff Prang, was the guest speaker, which, I don't know why, I attended. And he gave a pretty good presentation and overview on the assessor's office, not to be confused with the tax collector's office. He likes to bring that point. He brought up a couple of good, good points in his presentations. And I did invite him to give a present, come to give a brief presentation before the city council, so his staff will be in touch with us at some point. But one of the things that he emphasized was the homeowner's exemption. Apparently, this program is coming up again, I think they say in January or something like that. And they made notice of how many people who are eligible do not take advantage of the homeowner's exemption. That there's hundreds of thousands of people, basically, that don't take advantage of this program that are eligible. And they mentioned that the water company, a lot of times, will send out the notice or at least make a notation, you know, the water bill. So I think that's something that we can look into, either have them do a, I don't know, a flyer or a notation or something, if they would like to help us get the word out about the exemption. He'll talk about that if he comes to do a presentation. So that was a pretty good presentation. One of the other presentations he gave, I talked about his presentation, which was pretty timely, was Proposition 19, which is a recent proposition that deals with the important changes of family transfer. And this was one of those propositions that it sounded pretty good. A lot of people voted for it, not really realizing that they were basically limiting, not limiting themselves, but basically opening themselves up to more assessments than they probably would not have been had they not voted for it. It was a constitutional amendment, and it passed. So he'll give a presentation on that as well because it really affects the transfer of property to grandparents, to their grandchildren, or what have you. And when the property have to be reassessed once it's transferred even amongst your, and in some cases, even if it's a property between a married couple, if they hold a property joint, you know, that could affect it as well. So I thought that was pretty, and like, the presentation by the assessors not to be confused with the tax collector. So we will invite him to a council meeting at some point. And with that, I think that's all I have. Yep, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I forgot to ask something.
Yes, ma'am.
I was approached by a couple of citizens that would like an update of the Metro line. Could we have that maybe at next meeting, like an update of what's going on? A few of the citizens have not heard from Metro, even though they've reached to them.
I believe a fire was sent out this past weekend, because I got one on my gate.
Correct, and that's why they all started contacting us.
Well, if they read the red, there's a little scan thing you scan it, and, you know. I mean, they have to read the whole thing. Just get scared of Metro.
I'm just bringing it up. Sorry.
Thank you for bringing that. We appreciate it. Yeah, we get one other. Okay, with that, the next scheduled meeting of the Lawndale City Council will be held at 6:30 PM, Monday, October 18th. In these chambers, it's 8:57, this meeting is adjourned.